Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, June 21st, 2023. I'll call the meeting to order. Are there any declaration of pecuniary interest or the general nature thereof? Jacques, sure?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Accept the agenda, Deputy Mayor Williams. Oh, sorry. We have some additions to the agenda. Yep.
Can we add the, please, Gary River's bylaw?
Okay, can you do that in your rural affairs update?
I don't, okay. Well, not really something that...
Well, you just do it at the end of it, so we don't...
No problem, thank you.
Gary River. Are there any other additions or deletions from the agenda? Yes, Deputy Mayor.
The container bylaw, please, and the signage bylaw.
Okay, so that'll be under Building, Planning and Bylaw, number two. Signage and...
Jacob, we're gonna have fun, Jacob. And if, and please, speeding in Apple Hill, please.
So, I think we'll just at the end of it have a general. We're getting yelled at about speeding for everything, and so we out... Tim and I already devised a plan just two minutes ago, so we're ready. Okay?
Great. I'm reading this.
As amended.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, move on myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Committee of the Whole member accept the agenda of the Committee of the Whole meeting on Wednesday, June the 21st, 2023, as amended.
Thank you. All those in favor? Motion is carried. There are no delegations. Staff report, Administration Department, HGMH pool agreement. Councillor Manley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Move on myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the Committee of the Whole of the Township of North Glengarry recommends to council to authorize the mayor and CEO slash clerk to enter into an agreement with Hopitelle Glengarry Memorial Hospital for the operation and management of swim and pool programs at the hospital pool location.
Okay, thank you. Adam CEO.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm pleased to bring this agreement to council or the Committee of the Whole today, so it'll be at our council meeting on Monday for formal adoption. So you may see in the paper today in the Glengarry News, we are looking at doing the agreement with the hospital for the operation of the pool. The CEO was here a couple of months ago and did the delegation, and we've been in conversation with council and with staff about operating the pool. So they will be putting the water in the pool, I believe they were starting late last week, to do their programming there for their patients. And so, in consultation with the Community Services Director, we have decided to take on some of the programming. So we're looking at some seniors programming and things like that we had previous to COVID there at the pool. There's no cost to the municipality for the pool, operationally or capital, so that was part of the agreement negotiations. And we'll be, once everything's finalized on Monday, we'll be starting to look at recruitment for some staff or lifeguards, et cetera, and put some programming ideas together. The one thing that is outstanding with the agreement is the schedule, so that was one thing that we need to wait from the hospital to find out how much time the work going to be allotted, and so then Anne and I'll meet and see what we can put together.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Councillor Manley.
Exciting news. I think that's great, great news to offer. I've had numerous people ask me about the pool, what was gonna happen with the pool. In conversation with Community Living, they would certainly like to be, to have that opportunity to take clients back to the hospital pool. The comment that I heard was that they, they don't mind Cornwall, taking them to Cornwall, but some of them have opted out of Cornwall because it pools whole. And so this, this pool is warm, it's inviting for them or whatever. So can we please make sure that Community Living is involved in that discussion as well, or whatever one we're talking about?
For sure. I know, we can speak to Danielle, I know she's a great partner with us, so we can talk to her and see what we can work out, put some plans together.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Could we take this opportunity to also, if, if we find staff that are qualified to give maybe swimming lessons at the same time?
Yeah, that's, we just, we just have to put out a call for, to see what we're gonna get. That'll kind of cater to what we're, what we're gonna do.
Yeah, and we need to see what hours were allotted as well, councillor Massey, and then, as well, we're looking at a fall implementation. We're gonna need some time to see, see how many lifeguards. I know they dropped the age for lifeguards, so that should help us. And then see what hours we have, see what programming. I know that Aquafit and the seniors programming was one thing that was really asked for. Most people have been contacting the hospital, that, because they were running, running the programming before, so they have some good metrics on what they were doing. They've shared that with us. Chantel shared us, you know, the programming they had before, so what was a success, what wasn't. So we're gonna kind of go from there, yeah.
Yep, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two things, can we get some air conditioning on in here? Yeah. Thank you. I think this is a great partnership, and the, the community as a whole will stance to really benefit from it. It's, it's great. Are you anticipating that the, the fees that come in will pay for the staffing?
Absolutely. So we're looking at a cost recovery here. The, the good part is we're not being charged for the pool. We're also looking at an opportunity to work something with the parking, because I know that before, I know my kids went there before, it was a bit of an issue with the parking, so we're looking at maybe like a parking pass or something that comes along with your registration, just to make it really seamless for people to go in and out of the gate. So, yeah, we're gonna put some good things together, so keep it affordable.
Councillor Manley.
Just a follow-up too. I know that in the past, so maintenance of the pool, the hospital will be looking after maintenance of the pool.
Everything.
I know that, that was an issue before, so just so that everyone's aware that, that it was an issue that, because it's unionized or whatever, so the pool, they would have to close the pool. By the time maintenance got around to, it was another two or three days down the road before the pool got opened again type of thing. So if, if we can be sure we're looking at that issue as well or whatever when we, when we do this.
I knew through you, Mr. Mayor, to that point, I know that Rob, the CEO, has hired some new staff as well, and her, his new director of clinical is, she's very motivated to get patients in the pool, so it's part of the physio they're doing with them, so I know she really wants to keep it up and running, so certainly if there's any issues, we'll, we'll see, and I'll go to Rob and say, this was part of the agreement, so.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Okay, we are moving on to Treasury Department, adoption of revised procurement policy. Councillor Martin.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole of the Township of North Glengarry recommends the approval of bylaw 182023 and the associated revised procurement policy.
Thank you. Welcome, Kim.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The procurement policy is a living document, just like other policies, and sometimes it needs to be amended or things need to be added. What I've done on, on the copy of the policy itself is any changes are highlighted in yellow, and they basically pertain to government portal bulk purchases and the manner in which tenders can be received. The previous document had, there was some, there was some vagueness around this, or it wasn't there, so it's been changed. Furthermore, there is a change indicate that tenders will, will no longer be publicly open, nor is it required. This is especially challenging when most bids are now going to be submitted electronically, so those vendors aren't even present, or they're out of town. According to Ontario Public Buyers Association, both the Canadian Free Trade Agreement and the Comprehensive Economic Trade Agreement do not require public opening of documents. Furthermore, formal results of any of the bids that come in will be in a report to council showing who bid and the total amount, so it's still transparent, it's just not at the time of opening. Just to let council know, there has been some talk and documentation about public openings leading to corruption, which is kind of odd for me to understand, but one of the instances was a bidder comes in and he's got two envelopes with two different bids, a low and a high, and he sees that the person who got the bid last year is there at the public opening, so he will put in his lower bid to try to get it away from this gentleman. Or, what's happened in the past is, this gentleman has thrown, shown up, a guy has come with two envelopes again, he puts in his envelope, this guy puts in his lower bid, the envelope that was submitted by the other person was empty, it was just a decoy. So, I'd like to get away from the public opening, and I think it's only fair for those who are submitting electronically. The changes are basically found on pages 11 and 13 to 17, that just clarify this. Other than that, there has been no changes made to any of the threshold amounts, so the approvals stay exactly the same, it's just to incorporate that. So, I'm just asking that the Committee of the Whole recommends the approval of the bylaw and the proposed changes to the policy.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just I was reading down here, trying to read it all, but then 5B regarding the purchase of goods and a minimum of two verbal or written quotations, shouldn't, shouldn't we legally, shouldn't we always ask for a written quotation?
So where are you reading that, sorry?
Like at 5B.
5B at, on what page, at the end?
It'd be the sixth page, six. It's general provisions. You know, 5B like the purchase of goods between five and 10,000, so a minimum of two verbal or written quotations.
Well, we, we try to get written, that's the best policy as such, but if we can't, we will take a verbal on those.
Verbal, that opens up...
Yes, it does. Even like emails, we do emails as well.
Yeah, but if it's email, it's written down, and you can say that a verbal thing, it can do pretty...
Have we ever had an issue with it?
No.
Okay, it's okay, just that I, I saw that and I said, mm.
Kim?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Just to, to help with a lot of, especially with a lot of public work stuff, with a lot of contractors who don't have the administrative backup like some of the bigger guys would do, it's, can be fairly taxing for them to get a, like a formal written quotation. And so, under that amount, it's generally the, the contractors that you use are ones that you've already used before, so you can compare their pricing to, to previous years. I think the purpose of, of allowing that under that limit is just to not unfairly put a burden, administrative burden on those low, low value work for kind of the more local contractors.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Okay, moving on to Building, Planning and Bylaw Department, Administrative Monetary Penalties bylaw number 2023. Councillor Manley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Move on myself, seconded by councillor Cadell, that the Committee of the Whole of the Township of North Glengarry recommends the approval of bylaw 202023, Administrative Monetary Penalties AMPs.
Thank you. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I presented during the March 27th Committee of the Whole meeting, this new type of, of fines or penalty that can now be issued. So what we've done is we've, well, Todd did most of the work on the bylaw, so I have to give him the credit. He created a bylaw that is very similar to other townships in SD and G, and we've created our own, what, what it's called, an AMPs bylaw, so administrative, administrative monetary penalties. So then, they're not really called fines, but they're pretty much like fines. So, the, the process is, like, it has not changed since my last report. What has changed, so North Dundas had their AMPs bylaw up and running during the March meeting. South Stormont has also started to use that, and more and more townships will start to use it. Some of the cities would also use it because it's very easy. So as I explained the other time, so then, just quickly, the, how the process works is instead of, of having the bylaw officer issuing a fine, and then the money goes to the courts, and we only keep parts of that, so it's very complicated if the, if the person receiving the ticket decides to, to object to the ticket, we have to hire a lawyer, go in court, blah, blah, blah. So this system here is a lot quicker. So, once the ticket has been issued, everything is being dealt here at the office. So we have, so in the, in the process, so when someone gets a fine, they're allowed to have a review by a screening officer. So the screening officer would be someone in the office here, so the, the person would come here, defend him or herself on why they shouldn't get the ticket, why it should be reduced, why they should get an extension on time to pay the fine, et cetera, et cetera. So the person from here would be allowed to decide if they rescind the fine, if they, if they upheld it, if they, like, they can decide whatever they want to do with the fine at this point. The person after that, so just because it's not done all through the courts, we have to give people the option of, of objecting to the ticket. So the step above that is the hearing officer. So the hearing officer would be someone from, usually someone from another township, either a clerk or another bylaw enforcement officer, who would have no, no knowledge of what's happening in the township, so whether this person has a history with the township or the fines, they would not know anything about what's going on, and they would just evaluate the file that they have in front of them based on the facts that, of, of what happened with the fines and with the bylaw officer giving his testimony and the person giving his testimony. So what's good about this process is, well, it's the quickness of the process. So you give him a fine, if they decide to pay it, they come here at the office, they pay it. So it's very much like the parking fines, basically, but it's for all the bylaws that we decide to input in this AMPs bylaw. Two, well, one other thing is the, the two ways that we can recuperate the money. So right now, if someone doesn't pay their fine, Todd has to go in Cornwall at the courts, file a ticket, and they then go after the person, telling them they have an outstanding fine, blah, blah, blah. So it ends up nowhere, basically. So that's why this whole bylaw was created by, by, by larger cities, because they want, mostly, they want the money, and they want to be able to resolve it themselves. So here, there's two options. So the first one is that we're able to, to put it on the people's taxes. So if they don't pay their fine, there's, there's some time periods, 45 days, blah, 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 but if they decide to not pay the fine and we don't hear from them, we're allowed to, to put it on their taxes as unpaid taxes, so we can collect the money that way. Or, what we can do is we can go to MTO, there's a fee for that, but you can register the fine through the Ministry of Transportation of Ontario, so when they go to register their, their license, that pops up and they have to pay the fine at that, so they can't renew their license until they pay us the fines, basically. So it's two, two things that are good. The, the MTO one is good for when it comes down to that, but the other one is pretty, like, it's easy, you just put it on their taxes and it's, it's being paid that way. So it's a lot easier to deal with people, there's a lot more. So if, right now, when we issue a fine and we register it with the courts, it's, it's done, the fine is, is final, we can't do anything with it. With this here, if Todd goes on the property, we have always issues with, for example, long grass not being cut. Todd decides to give them a fine, so this person, if, if they're somewhat smart, they will just decide to cut their grass instead of coming here to pay the fine. If they cut their grass, they can just come here, ask for Todd to go onsite, grass is cut, tear the ticket, done deal, the problem is solved. So that's, it's, it's a lot quicker, it's a lot easier to work with for that. It's all done under the Municipal Act instead of the Provincial Offences Act, but we still have that option. So all of our bylaws that I listed in here that were, that we are doing with the AMPs, they're still, we're not touching these bylaws. So all the, the, the process that we're doing today, we're still able to do it even though. So if we decide to take someone to court for something or whatever, we can always use that option also, but this here helps with just the quick fines to be able to resolve the quick issues easier, basically. So that's why we, we are thinking it's a good idea. Yeah, so the bylaw, if you, like, if you have questions about the, about the bylaw, I'll be happy to answer, but the bylaws that we decide to input in the AMPs are parking, clean yards, nuisance, animal at large, keeping of dogs, pound keeper, littering, swimming pools, clear cutting, open air, and property standards. So, two that are not in there, and some other ones too, but like the more complicated ones like zoning and building, for example. So these were, so that's why I'm saying, we're still keeping the bylaws exactly as is, because you, you don't want to give a hundred dollar fine to someone who opened an illegal restaurant. You want him to comply, so the restaurant is legal, so the fine is worthless. So if he decides to, to fight everything that we're doing, we're still gonna bring him to court. So some, some bylaws, there's no use for that, but all of these bylaws, well, most of them are some that we get some complaints, we can go onsite, and they can easily be resolved with, not a threat, but like if someone knows that he can just get a fine like this, sometimes it, it will help, for sure. So we have, of course, the people who are gonna, who are going to get the fines will not be happy, but I can tell you that we have received some comments from members of the public that are happy with that, because, like, for example, if their neighbor, the dog, dog barking, grass cutting, if it can help, like, this is an easier bylaw to work with. So a lot of people are, are happy, it's another way to resolve some, some situations with bylaw. So, yeah, that's, that's pretty much it. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
I think that's good news. Any questions or comments? Councillor Manley.
Jake, just wondering, you said the MTO, there's fees attached, if we attach it to an MTO file, do you know what those, those fees are, or is it a percentage, or is it...
Yes, it's, it's not a lot. What we're charging, I think it's $20, and I think over there it's 17 something. So there's just a little fee, and when they would go to pay the fee, they would have to pay that as well. So we would recuperate the money eventually down the road. It's not a whole lot, but it's just because we're, like, we're talking to someone there and making them work, there's just a little fee, but it's not a whole lot, though, so it's, I, I kind of have the feeling that we're mostly gonna go through, through the tax department, but like especially for, for, for people like in Quebec for parking, when we don't know where they live, when we don't have a roll number for them, that's when the MTO comes in handy, because if it's not an owner and we don't know who it is, if we, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So if it's a tenant, is that, is that when you go through the MTO?
We could, yes, we could. See, that's, that's the thing with the, with the taxes, we can just put it on the roll to the owner. So if it's a tenant, and the other thing with this here, that's not harder, but we still, like, a, a bylaw enforcement officer still cannot force someone to show him his ID. So if, if it's tenants and stuff like that, and we get there and they refuse to show their ID, well, we'll have, we, we always have the option of going there with the police, but yeah, if we, if we know that it's a tenant, we can talk to the owner and we can deal with it some, some other way around. Yeah, if we have, like, if we know what, like, who's driving which car, the, the owner can tell us, and we could go with the MTO route. Yes, exactly.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. So there's no motion for the next, it's the signage and container bylaw, so. Do you want to go ahead, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. I was just, maybe if you could please just update us on the container bylaw, it's really, I'm just looking for an update to see what kind of progress we're making on, on getting some of these containers in urban areas that are, that are not appropriate, removed, and, and that kind of thing, and just how proactive we're being, please.
Yeah, well, we're, 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 we're trying. I know there was the one in Maxville that we had talked about, that one has been removed. So I, I went through the, through other townships' bylaws, most of them don't have anything for containers, so they don't really regulate containers, because the problem is that they're hard to consider as a building. They're not a building, so they're not in the Ontario Building Code, so you can't really go that route. But anyway, what, what the, the biggest issue with the containers, that people buy the containers without even knowing that they're not allowed to have it there. So they, they think, like, the websites, you just, it's, it's easy, you just buy it and they come and boom, they drop it on your property and they leave. So it's hard to go onsite and tell that person who just spent, I don't know, five, 10, whatever, $1,000, that they have to get rid of the container. So the, in, in urban sentiment areas, like in, in the villages, it's, it's more obvious, so we're more proactive with those. Out in the country, what, like, what some are doing now is that they're, when they have the container, they get either an engineer there, that's what we done a couple times last month, they get an engineer, and the engineer inspects the container, they, they create or they design a foundation to go under the container, sometimes there's a roof over it, so what they do is they make the container a building. So what we ask for the, to the people is that they cover up the container so that, so that it doesn't look like a container, just not to, to, to spread the fact that I have a container, so the neighbors will all go buy some, so. A lot of, a lot of people, that's what they're doing now. Besides that, we're, like, if, if they can't have it, they can't have it, and most of them understand, and they, they get rid of them with, it, it has happened a few times where people just said, well, too bad, we're gonna get rid of it, and in most cases, it works. We, we don't really have big issues with container too, like, I know there, there, like, there's a lot in the township, and there's a lot that we don't know, we don't drive around looking for them either. So they're, for us, they're not really an issue, unless they're being really put somewhere that everybody can see it. So that's why our, our bylaw is pretty strict, they're only allowed in certain zones. Most of the townships are, the people who have a bylaw, it's pretty similar, so they're not allowed in town. So I've, I've discussed the date too, there's like the grandfather, so a lot of the dates are, like most of other townships around, it's more recent than us, so there's, there's containers all over the place too, so it's, it's something hard, but that, that's what it is.
Go ahead. Thank you, Jacob. I'm, I'm glad that you're being proactive, particularly in the urban areas, because, you know, we're, you know, we've got this great CIP, which I'll be referring to in a moment anyway, but, you know, we're trying to beautify, we're trying to keep our, you know, our villages and hamlets and, you know, the main street in Alexandria, you know, beautified. We want it to look good, and if we've got containers all over the place, that's just not, it's just contrary to what we're actually trying to do, so. I, I appreciate that, and, and I think really, it's, it's not the rural areas that are, that are the problem, it's, it's the urban ones, and it looks like you're dealing with those. So I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Any other further questions, just on the container side of things? Okay, on the signage?
So, yeah, again, I, I've been looking at our, at our CIP, because we fund certain types of signage through the CIP, and the, the Community Improvement Plan has guidelines in terms of what signage is funded and what isn't. And, and again, you know, the idea behind it is to incentivize signage that is attractive, that it, you know, it, it represents the heritage nature of the building that it might be going on, if there is, it is a heritage building, that it's attractive, and that it enhances the street that it, that it's on. And, and so I was just wondering, you know, looking at the, the signage bylaw here, whether or not our sign, our existing signage bylaw actually takes advantage of and enhances or takes into account some of the elements of the guidelines for the, for the CIP, because I think they're valuable. For example, the objectives in the CIP for the signage, signage is to preserve the special character of Main Street and the, you know, village character in particular, to protect and enhance buildings for their architectural or historic nature, to preserve and enhance the visual unity of the streetscape, to favor architectural design and quality for restorations, renovations and repairs, to improve the appeal and attractiveness of commercial signage. So, and, and it does that through incentivizing, but I think, you know, we could maybe embed some, some of this possibly in our, in our signage bylaw, because, for example, we, we don't, through the CIP, fund backlit signs, you know, so those ones that are... so those ones that are backlit with fluorescent. Um, and it, and it actually encourages, um, those goo- that gooseneck lighting. And, and I think that that would be desirable in all of our urban areas if we could do that. I don't know, I don't know what, what we can and cannot do here, I'm just asking the question. Uh, for example, the CIP, um, it, it, it will only fund up to two, uh, com- commercial signs on any building. So for example, if they want three signs and they want them backlit, the program won't fund it. Uh, and that's, that's good, I would say that that's good practice, that we, we need to somehow or another encourage. Um, and, and of course it won't fund backlit either. And then it also has, um, some guidelines on the actual dimensions of the sign so that they're not these gargantuan things that take over the entire, you know, facade of a building, that, you know, that they're, they're properly sized. Um, so, uh, you know, I'm, I, I just would like to, because I think one of, one of the problems with this signage bylaw is that it doesn't govern, um, temporary signs, you know, those, you know, those signs on wheels that are all, um, uh, in bright orange and green and yellow. Uh, I understand why businesses like to use those signs because it catches people's eye and it brings people into their business, but it does zero for enhancing the beauty of our communities. And as a matter of fact, as far as I'm concerned, it actually detracts from them. Um, and so I, I, I think that I'd like to see us further, talk about that further to see if it's something that is desirable to include in the bylaw. Um, and then there's also billboard signs, which, um, there's a, there's a lot of that. I know they're on, uh, some of them are on private property and maybe we can't touch that with a ten foot pole, I have no idea. But there's one thing for sure, is that they are not aesthetically pleasing when you're coming in specifically, particularly from, coming from the south into Alexandria. It, it, it doesn't, it doesn't make you think, oh, this is a lovely town that I'm driving into and, and, you know, and I think it's fine to acknowledge that and to see if there's anything at all that we can do about it. And if not, that's fine, but I think at the very least we need to talk about it.
Go ahead, Counselor Massey.
There's a lot in there that you mentioned, Karma. So maybe, uh, maybe I, if I recommend something, maybe the CIP, uh, committee would, could come up with maybe, uh, uh, come up with some kind of a signage, uh, changes. It's hard to say, you mentioned a full size of a building sign when we have two, we have one in Maxville, the, on the King George Park. It's hard to say to people, don't put a monster sign. I, I know what you mean.
That's considered public art. It's different.
Okay, but the owner of a business can consider his sign a public art also or anyways, but I, I think it's, it would be like if we could come up, it's, it's hard to, uh, yeah, it's hard to, uh, kind of rule the people into doing what we think is nice and not missing what they think is nice, but it's, it's kind of private, it's to different tastes. And it, like I know the counties, they do have, allow signs on the side of the road to promote stuff. So if we're not gonna stop doing the same on our roads, you know, it's a, anyway, but I would recommend that the CIP committee come up with the, like, maybe not as many changes, but something like that.
Yeah, I, I don't think it should come from the CIP committee, I think it has to come from council because obviously we're gonna get that from the CIP committee and I'm, I'm not personally in favor of it. I think that, uh, you know, business owners, uh, they've gone through a tough time through the pandemic and, uh, you know, for us to start telling, telling them what they can and can't do and how they can and cannot promote their business, I, I don't agree with it. And, uh, I don't, I, I, you know, and I do agree when we had those big ugly yellow signs that they, they're, they're bad, but even now, there's not that many of those, uh, even the colored signs, there's not a ton of them as you go through town like there used to be. But anyways, I'm, again, I'm just, I, I don't mind seeing us give some parameters, but I'm, I'm definitely not in favor of, uh, like a full blown signage bylaw. Jacob first and then I'll go to Jacob.
Yeah, I just want to mention that it's two very different things also, right? The CIP will like recommend you do things to make it look good and to get the money out of it. The sign bylaw will tell you what you cannot do. So if I can compare with like, for example, dogs, well, the CIP would tell you, you should have a nice dog, that it's nice with kids, blah, blah, blah. The dog bylaw would, will tell you that it cannot bark. You know, like it's very, it's two, it's, the one is like the minimum that you have to respect not to be a nuisance to your neighbors and the CIP is something that you have to make it look good. The, the, the sign bylaw is not there at all to, right now anyways, it's not there at all. Like it doesn't care about looks, it, it doesn't care of, of where it is, as long as it's compliant with the bylaw, we'll give you your permit and that's it. So if it's structurally sound, if it's as per the bylaw, that's it. So it's, it's, it would be hard to, to match the two, that's what I'm trying to say, like CIP is one thing and that's fine, but ours is more for, for nuisance basically. It's a sign bylaw made to, to, to protect the people from nuisance, so I just wanted to, to mention that.
Okay. Counselor Manley.
So the counties has a sign bylaw, do they not?
Yes, they do.
So I've looked at that today, that you sent that out to us, Jacob. Um, could we not use that as a guide?
Ours is pretty similar though. It's already pretty much, it's, it's very close, yes. So when someone has to install a sign on a county road, they have to apply at the counties first. And there's a little bit more stricter in the sense like for setbacks and stuff like that, but yeah, they talk about this pretty much the same thing, like they can't be lit on other property and they can't be lit to, to annoy the traffic and they can't be too close to the road. So when I get the approval from the counties to issue my sign bylaw, if, if they approved it, I know mine is fine because they're, they're pretty close. I don't know if you read them both, I know they're long, but they're somewhat similar and other townships do are similar to that and.
Yeah, I, I don't think we got the, we didn't get the township one, we got the township revision. North Glengarry's revision, I didn't see the, the actual bylaw.
And the email, the bylaw wasn't there?
I saw the county one and I saw the revision, the, the township's revision one, that's what was in my package or whatever.
Bylaw forty-four dash ninety-nine? I gave some copies to Deputy Mayor.
No, there was, there was one that had the revision and it was, anyway.
Oh, the shipping container was an amendment to our zoning bylaw.
Okay.
And you had the application.
Okay. Um, just to follow up, Mr. Mayor, for me.
Sure.
Um, and I, I agree, I agree with you Karma on the, on the, the, um, the big billboards and that that are in, at the, uh, the south end of town, but did we not have a study done, commissioned or whatever? And that was one of the things they, they thought was a highlight. Do you remember that?
Well, that was someone's opinion.
Well, again, but that, there's the, there's the, there's the problem, right? That we run into is it's someone's opinion.
Yes, exactly.
And we've run into this all the time when we, when we do, um, you know, um, artwork, public artwork that comes before the committee or whatever, you know? Well, I don't like that. Well, I like that. I don't like that, I like that. You're gonna run into that and so I, I think we have to be very, very careful with, with it, that's all I'm saying or whatever, I think.
One of the good things is at the south end is that one property that used to be, that had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them on it, they're gonna be developing that property, so they've all been taken down now. They waited till they've all expired and as they expired, they took them down. So you just have the ones as you're coming, like there are, as you're coming to the old Tittle Shovels, those are the only ones left out there, so.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, sorry, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, to say that some signs are acceptable and these are nice and all that, I, I disagree with that because I, I think signs are signs, you know? They don't need a sign telling me, you know, I can see the church over there, you know, in my park, you know? Uh, there's one across from the high school there that, uh, uh, there's a bench there and a sign, you know, it's, I think it's out of control. You know, so that's my opinion on it, you know? So to leave it up to someone to say, well, these are nice ones and these aren't, I, I don't think that's, uh, I already don't think that people deciding these are nice ones are making good decisions.
Right. Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I know, and I, there's one, there's a couple of empty signposts going north of the town, you know, just as you pass.
Microphone, microphone.
There's a couple of.
Signs that are, that a guy, I cut the hay there.
The guy had put signs up to put signs and, uh, they're on the wrong side of the road, so the counties did not approve it because if you're going this way, the signs can only be like this. So, and then if, if, if we ever see signs that bothers us, like I think as council members, and if they're, look like they are a nuisance, maybe we can bring them one by one and then Jacob and then maybe get rid of them or get, get them cleaned up like the one that, for the Glens, uh, at the beer store there that was.
Yeah, that one's gone now.
So like I think case by case, if we bring it up, maybe then we can, instead of just changing the old sign bylaw there.
Further questions?
Well, I agree, it's, uh, like as long as they're not offensive and, uh, like they don't have any offensive language on them or anything like that, and it's information on the sign for the business and contact numbers, whatever, I, I don't have too much objection to that. As, as long as the sign's in good shape and it's not falling over and, and endangerment to that kind of a thing and rolling out onto the street or falling out to somebody and might just brush up against it, so.
I think one thing that we could do is also just if there is a sign that's really brutal or whatever, that we can encourage maybe Nat to go visit them and bring the, the, you know, and say, hey, look, there's some money available if you, you know, you don't have to necessarily go up and say, your sign sucks. Sorry, I forgot I'm on camera, but you can go and say that, listen, you, um, you know, we have a program here, would you, you ever thought about putting up a new sign or something like that? And maybe it, uh, maybe they would jump at it, you know, knowing that there's some funds available. Anyways, that's just two cents on it. Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Follow up, um, so do we have in our bylaw, if, if it, if the sign, if the business is no longer there? Because we have some signs in Alexandria where the businesses haven't been there for years and, and the, the sign is still up.
The one across from Tail de Jean?
Yeah.
Still a furniture store and it hasn't been there in twenty-two years, I think.
So I, maybe if, if that's not in our bylaw, maybe that, that could go into our bylaw as a possibility. The, the other one, and I think that, I think that is in the county, I thought it's, I thought it was in the county's one, maybe the.
For what?
For, for the idea that if it's, if it's expired building or expired business.
Well, we, we don't have that in there.
We don't, okay.
No.
All right, so it might be something we can look at.
Something we could.
The other thing that, that came up during the pandemic was all these offensive signs.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And maybe we should have, yeah, okay.
We use that, we use this bylaw to resolve that situation you're talking about because it says that you can't have any offensive language or.
Does it, does that include flags?
No, flags are exempt from this. Flag is not a sign, so. Why?
Yep. Just, just saying, just toss it out there.
Yeah, yeah.
For discussing things, right? So.
If I wasn't on camera, I'd have lots to say. Um, Deputy Mayor, do you want to add anything further at this point? You okay? Okay, thank you. Um, Fire Department, uh, Community Risk Assessment, OREG thirty-seven eighteen, Counselor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Martin, that the Committee of the whole of the Township of North Glengarry receives Report FD twenty-twenty-three oh-five regarding community risk assessment for information purposes only.
Thank you, welcome Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As indicated, this is just a report just for information purposes. Um, to give a background requirements regarding the development of a community risk assessment, um, Ontario Reg three-seventy-eight eighteen was made under the authority of the Fire Prevention and Protection Act, where it requires all municipalities to develop a CRA before July first, twenty-twenty-four. So, um, this CRA is basically also used to inform municipalities to make decisions in relation to their fire protection services. So over the next year, our departments can be, uh, developing the CRA to comply with these requirements and the new regulation. We'll be creating this as a standalone document where we can, uh, review the, uh, the document on a yearly basis and make, uh, changes as needed. Um, basically, if we're reviewing nine different components and looking at nine different profiles, uh, in relation to it, and some of those profiles are the geographic profile, the building stock, critical infrastructure, uh, democratic, demographic hazards, public safety response, uh, community service, economic profile, past loss and event history. These are all in relation solely, whenever we're looking at the community risk assessment, this is solely gonna be looking at anything, uh, fire related, uh, issues. So, um, we are in a position, a very good position to, uh, develop this over the next year, uh, utilizing our current simplified risk assessment as well as our HIRA. Um, we'll be reaching out and utilizing, uh, the census with Statscan, um, and using our Esri maps that, that just for mapping purposes and so forth. So we'll be creating a, a good profile that we can, uh, bring forward every year to look at where we need to be as a municipality, uh, moving forward. So as I indicate, uh, it is just for information purposes, uh, to kind of showcase where we're gonna be going with this and ensuring that, uh, we are meeting all the regulations. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Okay, excellent. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Chief. All those in favor of the mov- motion? Motion is carried. Uh, consent agenda, uh, Counselor Martin.
Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Committee of the whole of the Township of North Glengarry receives the items from consent and agenda for information purposes only.
Okay, any questions on the items under the consent agenda, community service work plan or public works update? No, but, uh, keep up those updates, they're, they're very good, so thank you for those. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried.
Was that due?
Nope, they're under consent agenda now. Okay, so matters arising from standing committees, Counselor Massey, Raisin Region Conservation Authority.
Yeah, we had a meeting last week and basically we had an update on a few different projects and the tree planting, I think they, now they're looking at sixty-seven thousand trees being planted this year instead of the fifty, usually fifty-five. So that's good, that went well, the, the tree giveaway and the spring programs. Um, also, uh, just there was a media release that, uh, Grace, Grace Creek Trails are indefinitely closed because of the, uh, the ice storm branches on one side and on the other side, uh, the property was sold that the trails were on, so now we're trying to, uh, work out the, a deal with the, the new owners because the, most of the trails were on this, on his, uh, land and then, uh, for the Cooper Marsh one, we're doing two major work for a ducts and limited work, uh, on the buffer, uh, not buffers, but, uh, you know, it's the, they're working out pumps and doing the area so to update the area for the ducts and all the different dams, so. But most of the trails are open at Cooper's March, it's just that you, there'll be signs, but just to, and basically that's, that's what it is, yeah, not much else.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on that report? Okay, thank you. Maxwell Manor update, Counselor Gary Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The manor written out was presently in day three of COVID outbreak. They have six residents and five staff are affected. Um, it's a ten day period altogether. Uh, the expansion plans are on track, uh, for the spring start. Um, they have to do some extra core work samples in places where foundations are going in because they're a little bit off on the original samples, but that's not gonna affect the start of date. Uh, we had a fundraising seminar, uh, held at the Highland Lounge, uh, Sam LaPratt of the radio talk show, uh, Sam LaPratt Show was a guest speaker on fundraising and whatnot. So different groups have been set up to help, uh, help with the fundraising work and the hope is that, uh, we may be able to raise five million dollars locally for that project, so. It's, it's getting, just getting started. Um, all the heating and the air conditioning units are now up and running just in time for the hot summer season. Um, Treasurer Deidra Hill is retiring this summer and, uh, last, last notice, Amy had two candidates she was interviewing and. she was interviewing and she hopes to have them in place for a training period, so. And last of all, our AGM meeting is next week and the present chair, Ivan Coleman, is stepping down after, she's almost 20 years. He's been with them, it's almost since the inception of the board of directors, so. And although he wasn't committal, Scott Graham is assumed to maybe step into that role, so we'll have to see at the meeting next week.
That's great. Thank you, Counselor. On to you, Glengarry Pioneer Museum update.
Okay, this past weekend, they had their seventh annual Smith Inn event. They get blacksmiths in from Ontario, Quebec and in the U.S. The attendance, from the couple of people I interviewed, they're kind of disappointed, but it's over 100 people each day and considering the rain on Saturday, that's probably not, not too bad a number. Most of the attendees, almost all of the attendees, they figured were from outside the area, so they're drawing in from, from outside. I guess the feeling is that most of the people locally have been there, done that already having, having been seven years, so. Unfortunately, they've had to cancel their next event, which was the honey fair for July 8th. Basically, same thing mainly due to many exhibitors stating lack of staff or volunteers to maintain their exhibits. The group is right now working on their strategic plan and main problems to solve are similar to what everybody's running into, trying to increase volunteerism, freshening up the sites and exhibits, come up with some new event ideas to attract people, reach out to other partners and museums. They want to try to reach out to one other museum similar for some kind of partnership, try to do that once a year. And then try to bring in some hands-on or some virtual exhibits that people can actually, you know, when you go to a museum, it's usually don't touch, don't touch, but they want to have more of a hand-on experience for, for visitors. The next event is the July 27th, Hamlet, Shakespeare in the Park. And then after that is a Glengarry Artists Collective exhibit from the 29th to the 13th of, 29th of July to 13th of August.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor. Glengarry Archives update, Counselor Madden couldn't be with us today, he had to take care of something, so I can do that update. We had our, we recently had a meeting. Most of the discussion was just going through our constitution and just updating things from when we started earlier. Stephanie Jaworski had went through it all and we know how detailed she is, so it was, it was good to get it all cleaned up and otherwise, everything is, we're still getting lots of really cool items coming in. We got some just last week from the deputy mayor's father, turned over his entire collection of letters, books and, which include a lot of the time when he was the Liberal President and it's, yeah, I, we haven't been able to look through it. I think there's a time period on it, so, but Alan says there's some pretty neat stuff in there from, very historic that you're sure that the National Archives would like, but aren't going to get, as you know how, how he is. So other than that, not too much else. Any questions on, actually, any questions on any of Gary's things or? Okay. Arts, Culture and Heritage update, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the two SDNG plaques are now up. Thank you, Ann, for coordinating that at Island Park. One is the Churches of Alexandria and the other one is this little history on Mill Pond. I think the third one in North Glengarry will be the Highland Games, the KAS site, and so that one will be going up soon, I think, in the next little while, hopefully before the Highland Games. Celebration of Life was held for a longtime member of the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee, Dane Lincoln, at the Bishop's House. Deputy Mayor Williams and myself attended that. We had a tour through the Bishop's House. That is a fantastic facility. If you haven't had a chance to go through that, the work that they've done in that, in that facility is outstanding. So if you ever have a chance to get through and have a look at what they've done there or whatever, it's a, it for sure. And Dane was a big, big part of that push or whatever to restore the Bishop's House. We've had a couple of CIP applications we're looking at in Maxville and we've reviewed, at our last meeting, we reviewed the blue plaque program. We currently have three blue plaques in Alexandria and we're sort of looking for other areas where we can possibly put some, some blue plaques to honor either a person or a significant historical sort of building. So anyway, that's where we're at, the Arts, Culture and Heritage.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Any questions? Okay, seeing none. County Council update, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the county council agenda in front of me here, so I'm just going to go through it.
It was a long one.
It was, what, four and a half hours? It was a marathon. Oh, anyway, we had a couple of really interesting delegations, one from the General Manager of Human Services, Melissa Morgan from the city of Cornwall, because they're the service manager for all social services and housing in Cornwall and SDG. And she gave us an update on what's going on with housing and it was a little bit scary because we've got a lot of work to do in terms of building houses, building houses. And then a very interesting presentation from Jim Pine, who's a retiring CAO from Hastings County, talking about the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, seven and seven regional housing plan, which is proposing to build, I think somewhere around 7,000 rental units across Eastern Ontario.
In seven years.
In seven years. So that's promising and if they get the, the federal and provincial funding partnerships they're looking for, then they'll be reaching out across SDG and all the municipalities will probably be getting on board in some fashion. The, there was a regional incentive program report and there were a lot, several really great projects that got approved through the regional incentive program that are in North Glengarry. Can't remember them off the top of my head, but.
The Tranquility Acres. And the Glengarry Market.
And the Glengarry Market, yeah. So they both got funding through that program, so that's excellent. That program is, it's a spectacular program. There was a lot of tenders and quotations that you really don't want to hear about. And what's the other thing? Just let me go down here, sorry. There was. Oh, this is interesting. The SDG and Cornwall are going to be partnering on the, the two Discover Guides. Cornwall always does its own tourism guide and SDG traditionally its own tourism guide. And it's really refreshing to see that partnership happening between Cornwall and SDG. They'll do one guide, it will represent the entire region rather than two separate guides that basically are kind of all saying the same thing anyway. So not only does it save paper, but it's, it's really an excellent opportunity to, to work together and have more of a regional message. So I thought you'd be interested in that and I, I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Yes, go ahead.
Just thank, I just would like to thank counties for putting that little bitty of asphalt on Main Street. I know a lot of people are happy. It was, so pass my word on to those people there.
Yes, some people happy, some people, I think, thinking that we're putting a full pavement down. I mean, we tried to, to, again, we always talk about better communication and that might be one of them. People didn't understand that it's just to get us through till we can do the full big project, so, but yeah, it's a lot better than it was, for sure. Friends of the Trails update, Counselor Manley.
Just a couple of things. The Trails are working on a project with Lagon Public School. I'll be attending on Friday, doing a scavenger hunt event or whatever and doing some other work or whatever, sort of the real life projects that the government is funding and so they're using some other money for this. And we're working towards the, ensuring the use of the trails for future generations and we had that presentation at council or whatever and I believe it's coming back to council in the next, next little bit, so.
That's great, good. Community Development Committee, Deputy Mayor Williams? I don't have the, I thought you were doing it, so I didn't put up the agenda, but we really didn't, it was just mostly our reports. There was a discussion about the, about having development, separate development committees. We haven't gotten there yet. We, we got it, just trying to remember about the meeting, go, go ahead.
I think of note, too, is the new ownership or new CEO of IHA. So that was something that just came out and I think I announced that to the community that day that we had met with them and it was very positive. I know you'll see some movement definitely in the next weeks and months to come there, so very exciting, new CEO. We met him and his team and very encouraging, so.
Yeah, they, we've looked up, they've done some major projects and it's, it's really encouraging and they, they weren't just talking a good game, they were, I think they can back it up financially as well, so it was, was good news. Okay, Rural Affairs update, Counselor Massey? We'll change the community development to me.
Yeah, we had a meeting, I believe in the third week of May and then that recommendation came to council, the last meeting we had in council. The next meeting, there's no meetings probably for June and July, so we'll probably meet in August to, and then we're, I think we're going to get South Nation and Raisin River Conservations to have a presentation on beaver management and different, different programs that they will have to offer to rural residents and commercial.
Okay, questions on that? Okay, seeing none now. Would you like to jump on your?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just that resident in Alexandria, a couple of weeks, about three weeks ago, came to me and he lives on the Alexandria-Gary River Canal, you know, the little canal that goes through under the town and everything? He lives across, he lives north of the chateau on, on that side, near Sandsfield Street. And he mentioned that his wall, you know, the canal's wall is collapsing and then water getting under and everything. So he said, oh, you know, who's responsible for that and stuff like that? So I was going to the Raisin River Board Meeting last week, so I asked, I did ask the question to, to the board, which I, yeah, I'm on the board too, so. So their answer was not of our responsibility, so it goes on the ownership of the land, which is, I understand, like it's a lakeside or riverside property or something. And then I did talk to Dean after and he said, yeah, that's, if there's a problem, township will come in and clean it up. But it's just that in the bigger sense of, in the bigger picture and the bigger, I don't want to compare it to the Rideau Canal, but it's, it's something historic and I was just, I was just wondering if I could connect to the TV because, or I got it all set up, I just need to press connect. I could show the.
Can you take your lock on for a jazz? She could probably plug it in or no?
No, just, I'll just try here. I don't know if it's going to work. Yeah, allow.
Is that going to mess you up?
Okay, maybe not then. Okay, so anyways, if you look, if you go from the, where on the Bishop, on the Dominion Street Bridge that we were talking earlier, there's a, there's a wall retainer. Yeah, you'd have to allow, but don't worry about it. So it's, it's, it's a built-up canal, basically. So I know, I know at, at one point we'd have to look like around the grotto also, there's a nice little thing and a little bridge go over it. If we let it deteriorate to the point that it's going to wash up ground and everything, I know it's not our property, but there again, like we'd asked, we'd asked the nursing home, the chateau, not the chateau, the pallet to, to build up their own little sidewall. I'm just proposing that maybe we ask Tim to get a, some kind of study done or something, how much work would be involved? And not that I'm saying that we should repair this next year or in three years, just gets a heads up at least what we're dealing with, because if we're going to pass along the, the price of rebuilding that canal or what we're going to do with that canal eventually, because if we let the wall collapse, then we're going to manage the side of the properties, like there's something needs to be done there. So I don't know, I'm not saying, I just want to bring it up to the council or the staff to, just to see what, have a plan or something.
Go ahead.
So we actually had Raisin River come and, after the flooding, right? So they did a presentation and one of the things that was discussed was around ownership. And that's a bit of a quandary. So there's no real definitive answer on who owns that. So if we compare the Gary River to a road, right? So the, the roads are owned by the township, they're owned by the county. So if we need to maintain a road, we have jurisdiction to do so, right? So the issue right now is, is we don't know who owns the Gary River. Right? So, and I understand, Jacques, that, and this is like something I think that has come out of the most recent flood and there's been some, some complaints mainly to Raisin River.
Yeah.
And we went through, they had a bunch of questions with not a lot of answers, to be honest with you. And not a lot of plans.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
If we can start trying to.
Right.
Stop, because.
And I think it warrants a bigger discussion because one of the discussions we had that day was if I want to close up and stop or do work on the Gary River or next to the Gary River?
You can't.
You can, you just need a permit. But there's no real understanding of who maintains the Gary River.
Yeah, and especially the land abutting to it.
Agreed. So with a road, as Tim would explain, there's a road allowance, which allows us to do work within that road allowance. But because we don't know, so it's basically, does the federal government own it through DNO? Does Raisin River own it? Does the township of North Glengarry own it? Do the landowners own it? It's quite plausible, right?
I can just, I can just say that on, on the St. Lawrence River, even though there is a, there is technically a right of way that goes all the way around the river that doesn't belong to everybody, that doesn't belong to the homeowner, they actually are responsible for their own shoreline. So I, I just, I don't, I don't mind that we can maybe get some information and, and discuss it.
Yeah.
But where you're looking at multi-millions of dollars.
Oh, I know, I know, Jamie. I just, I just, I, I don't want us to plan for three years, like I said before. I just want to get, it's up to what, what, you know, look into it at least, you know, try to resolve, because the Raisin River told me not ours.
Yeah, but again, that, that, this, doing this.
Yeah, but that, that.
And I'll say it right in public is, that is a Raisin Region Conservation Authority problem.
Agreed.
And they, because what do we pay our money for? We pay them to go and take slats out of the, out of the dams? No, it, it's not. That, that is their job. You know, they, they, they like to tell us what we have to do, but they don't provide any, you know, oh, it's not us.
They did, they did put a lot of money at, at Lock Gary Road, the dam and Canyon Dam Road.
The dam's different.
Yeah, yeah, but no, I'm just saying.
But you know, we still pay for that, right?
We have an agreement.
Like we do at the counties, they do some work.
No, but I'm just saying, we still pay for that, so.
Yeah, no, it just, I just want to get us to look at, because I never thought, before that, that resident came to see me, I said, geez, yeah, you're right, maybe it's always a problem, but what if he decides, going to ask the pallet to rebuild the $300,000 or million dollar wall?
But are you going to ask us to do that?
No, no, no.
The taxpayers?
We have to look into that, see what.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, and, and that's not the only question. There are other questions that are, that have risen recently as well and I'll use the Deleu River on the fourth concession, where the river comes right close to the fourth concession. And there, there were all of those junk trees that over the winter, well, over the last number of years, but particularly this winter, have all fallen into the river and they're crisscrossed, they created a real barrier. And I spoke to the executive director of the South Nation, just because I happened to be in a room with him, sort of asking, well, you know, who has jurisdiction over this? Because it's going to be a problem eventually, it's going to plug the river and then we're going to have upstream flooding, which already happens in the spring anyway, but it'll be worse. And, and he, he did the same kind of thing. He shrugged his shoulders and he said, I'm not sure. And so we do have some work to do.
But I think someone needs to be sure because if I want to stop up and close the river through. the river through a non-natural way, because I got in trouble that day calling it a natural water course, but if I want to put in some sort of dam or anything, I have to get a permit to do so. But the issue right now is these trees falling in. So the Raisin River Conservation Authority gets calls along the Raisin River. People say, well, this giant tree's fallen, and they don't take them out. So who is to do that, is the question.
And the same thing, too, like I know the counties have a big plan to rejuvenate Main Street, and if they put like a pressure on that tunnel that goes under Main Street, is that tunnel safe to put, who fixes it?
They've already, they've already done engineering on that.
Okay, okay, so that's good.
It's all been engineered.
Just get out of that tunnel, the walls that are all stones are collapsing. Anyway, I just wanted to put it on the radar, that's all I wanted to do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We looked into repairing one of the bridges at the grotto, where that walled thing is, and Raisin River was all over us, you know, engineering, this and that, you know, it was hardly worth pursuing, and so that's, they want to have...
They want to have control, but they don't want to...
Exactly, yeah.
But again, not to blend in the whole discussion, but that would be an historic canal for me, like that's part of the Glengarry history. I don't know what year it was built, but it was probably a long time ago. And that would, something that maybe in five years, we could get a grant from government, the federal government, to say, okay, well, just like the Rideau Canal is, I'm sure is getting mad, updated on it every year, work done, anyways.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other, any further, other further items anybody wanted to discuss, or?
Well, the speeds.
Oh, yeah, speeds, so. Tim, take that away for a minute.
To make things easy, I would suggest probably the best thing to do, I've been looking into some pricing, is maybe allow me to bring a report on Monday.
Sure.
With what we can do. There's some options, some people have done some tenders recently, so there are some options, but I'd like to bring a proper report on Monday and put some good time into it.
Is there some work we may not be able to do this year anyways?
Maybe.
So there would be some funds available for maybe some of these speed signs and that everyone's crying for, so. But, go ahead.
Well, one of my concerns was really trying to expand the 50-kilometer limit further out.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure these kilometer-per-hour signs have been there for years, and there's been expansion out. Now, as I, as I put in my email, just driving spreaders around this spring, I noticed some little villages, that as soon as there's a residence, that's 50 kilometers, they're at the very first house. And I noticed really, from the photos I sent, you can't even see the 50-kilometer sign in Maxville until you're right at, you're basically right at the entrance to the Maxville Manor, which is a spot where traffic is going to slow and turn.
Definitely a county issue that we'll have to talk to them about, so.
That's basically, like I was telling Tim, do we have to do a presentation to the county to try to get these signs pulled back?
No, we can do it.
You know, so that's, that's the main issue I found, is just try to put that 50-kilometer limit at least out, and if possible, make a 40-kilometer limit closer to the schools , right, on Main Street, but that's up to...
Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Sorry, I was just able to open up my computer here, so just some preview, some of the issues that we want to look at with them. One is that we want to make sure we get some fair coverage across the township, not just going to focus it in one area. We have had issues with theft of those signs, so we have some solutions to that as well, but want to investigate it properly. We also have, we currently have five signs, and they're from a company that, that while the signs are very good, they're also a lot more expensive, so this is a sign that maybe aren't as pretty, but they are, they do function very well. And, yeah, so I'll collate all that information and bring it, bring it to council for Monday. I have most of it, but I just need to check on a few things and see what we can do to move around some budget.
Okay, that's great. Go ahead, deputy mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so this week I had a phone call, and actually, there was some activity on Facebook, where Jamie and I were both tagged. And anyway, we didn't, we didn't engage in that, but then that resulted in a phone call, which was good. And this fellow from, who lives on Main Street in Apple Hill, and so I told him we would be discussing it tonight, and various options, but he said that, and, you know, Apple Hill is really, people are commuting, they're going through there, you know, they're not stopping, and...
From Begon, at least there's a stop sign.
Yeah, at least there's a stop sign there, but, so, so anyway, he's got, he's got a very valid concern there, so I told him we'd be talking about these digital signs, but also, then he asked me the question, he said, well, you know, what about additional signage on the entrances to sort of say, look, you know, please respect the community that you're passing through, because people live here? I, I know that additional signage just can just kind of pollute the environment, and people don't necessarily look at it, but I, it was his idea, and I said I would bring it up at the table. I don't know whether or not that is something that is sensible or not.
I would suggest road paint, 50-kilometer, I've seen that often, especially in the north, north townships, it's straight there, 50-kilometer limit. I've seen other signs that, community safety zones, and fines will be doubled or increased, so that kind of slowed me down a little bit, but I haven't seen a cop.
Okay, so we'll expect that report. Go ahead, Tim.
Sorry, just one more thing, is just, just to remember, these are county roads, so we can, you know...
Talk about it all day, but, yeah, we really have no say.
They have a, you know, we talked about the signage bylaw, and there's a permit system for signs through the county, and the speed radar signs, we already have an agreement with the county of where we can put them up and that sort of thing. If we want to add more things, road paint and that sort of stuff, just to say, I'll only be able to provide the information that I have, so.
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the whole township, because I've been bringing this issue to the table for many years.
I've never heard.
And I want to be sure that it's not just the towns and the hamlets that get the, it's the Lawheals and the Kenyans that also get, so, thank you.
Last thing, and it's short.
On that point, Jeff, I know when we reconstructed the sixth, all the signs were removed, but now there's not one sign on the whole six, which is a 10-kilometer or eight-kilometer...
Eighty kilometers.
So there's not one speeding sign, and I know sometimes you get bored of signs, but there's no signs at all anywhere, so.
Okay. Thank you. Notice of motion, next committee, the whole meeting is Wednesday, September 20th, at 3:00 PM here in the council chambers. Just some things that are happening this weekend, we have the Maxville Fair coming Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. We also have the Maxville Yard Sale, which I believe is on Saturday, and the Alexandria Yard Sale, which is also on Saturday, so lots of yard sales to find your stuff. The Wood Brothers, it's their fourth anniversary this weekend, so they have events and things going on Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and...
That's where you'll be those four days?
No, no. But thank you, deputy mayor, for bringing that up. Wow, that's like three meetings in a row you're singing to me, so. Does anybody have any other, anything else that they know that's going on in the...
Canada Day event.
Yeah.
Maxville and Apple Hill on the 30th, Alexandria on the 1st, and Glen Robertson on the 2nd.
Yeah, yeah, good. And in July, Concert in the Grotto starts, so let's go.
First Wednesday in July.
First Wednesday in July. Is that karaoke night? No? Okay. I just, I was just asking, I was just, I have a friend that's interested. Motion to adjourn, councillor Massey.
With my consent, again, by councillor Manley, there being no further business to discuss, the meeting was adjourned at 4:18 PM.
All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today. Have a good rest of the week. Thank you.